I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, August 5th, 2024, to order at this time. We'll start by asking Assistant County Manager Kerry Sanders to lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, be with the commissioners today in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on today's agenda. Bless our citizens, first responders, and those defending our nation. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now, with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here this morning, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we have our Register of Deeds, Ms. Amiga Jarman, and also with us, as always, Amiga's here all the time, too, is Sheriff Chris Thomas. We appreciate y'all being here today. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers one opportunity for the public to comment. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue in which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. So we're at item one, the motion to adopt today's agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing, none. Item two is the approval of the items on the consent agenda. If there's any items on that agenda someone would like to have removed and put on the agenda? If not, we need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing, none. Motion carries. So we're moving right to item three, public comment. Mr. Smithman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What other the public comment?
Period by calling on Richard Dodson to address the board.
Good morning.
For giving me a few minutes of time? My name is Richard Dodson, and I am with Sleep in Heavenly Peace, addressing a health concern. Just briefly, if you look at page three is what I want to draw your attention to first. We build beds, bunk beds specifically, and we do it free. All volunteers, all donations. As of this morning, there were 233 beds requested from members of the county. Without resources and without funds, it's going to be difficult to meet that objective. As soon as we turn on the website, I have a feeling that that's going to be four times that amount within a week. That's going to be, that's a lot of children who are sleeping on the floor, and that doesn't even account for those who don't know anything about Sleep in Heavenly Peace, which is a national organization, a 501 nonprofit group across the United States. Now, come September 12th, I'm sorry, September 14th, there will be a, what they call bunk beds across America. Every single chapter in the United States and in Canada will be building bunk beds for children across the nation. That's going to be a huge, huge event. It's going to be at the Infinite Prague Catholic Church, right down the street, and that's going to bring a lot of people from a lot of different locations. So I'm hoping that bringing this to light and the problem that we have with children sleeping on the floor is a health concern. If we can get them, keep them from catching a cold or a flu by sleeping on the floor and put them in a bed, maybe that will help the situation.
Whoa, what'd you got? Come back up here. What's it cost?
Good morning. My name's Michael Farrell. I am the Build Manager for the Sleep in Heavenly Peace Chapter here at Jacksonville, North Carolina. Roughly, a bunk bed can cost up to $500, and that's including materials, wood, non-treated wood, stain, screws, lag bolts, mattress, pillows, comforters, pillowcases, and sheets, comforter sheets. And then, all that has to be supported by donations. What we are trying to do today is talk to you so that you can fill the word down to all the government agencies, but strictly, well, I correct myself. I would like the Board of Education and Social Services to be highlighted because Social Services, of course, will come across children that will need the beds. Teachers will probably have a good idea who's staying awake and who's not staying awake in class, and that might be due to not having a proper bed or sleeping properly. So those two entities there are key. Everybody else is a bonus because the more people that know helps. The more people who are willing to donate money helps. The more people who are willing to donate their time helps because if we get a large number of beds requested, like we're 200 something behind. The other day, for our first trial, just the team members learning the ins and outs was, we got one bunk bed out of five done, just on our learning curve. So, but once we start getting up and running and everybody's in with the flow here, it's going to go fast, demand's going to go up, once the word will go out, and believe me, I'm trying to get the word out. So, but we are hoping that you will help us with just to tell the county because the word will get even farther. If we have the handout I gave upstairs to the admin office, so they can put that out on whatever email they can, and every little bit will help and it will make a difference. Our children are very important. If we teach them, help them, I think our future will be better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, the final speaker, and I apologize if I say the name wrong, Brenia Robinson?
Brenai.
Brenai. So close. Sorry.
If you didn't already know, my name is Brenai Robinson, and today I am here to talk about drug use in Onslow County. And I'm a fortunate member of the Boys and Girls Club at New Bridge Middle School. Today, I am here to talk about drugs and alcohol in Onslow County, and I think that drugs can affect also maybe adults, teens, and kids. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. They can affect adults, teens, and also kids in many different ways. I also think that, I'm so sorry, I also think they can affect teens in many different ways, and the reason why teens do drugs is because of peer pressure and not having a safe space around them or adults to help guide them. I'm a fortunate member of the Boys and Girls Club, and I, not also do, I have trusting adults to help guide me and navigate them around the world in a safe space. The use of drugs in Onslow County is 6%. The use of drugs in Onslow County is 6%. I also want to help people or kids quit drugs and have a normal life without having peer pressure or having any kind of interaction with drugs. I would also like to address alcohol use in Onslow County. Some teens or young adults or adults use alcohol and use it for the wrong good or abuse or any kind of other bad, in any kind of other bad way, that it's not supposed to be And I also want to help teens or kids not have a wrong, be in a wrong kind of environment where they're around that kind of stuff to not grow up and start doing the same thing that they're around in their environment. I would like to thank you all for allowing me to come and fulfill my duty as a youth delegate. That's all I have.
Amen.
Because that five minutes feels like an eternity, and when you stand up the first time to do that, it takes a lot of nerve to get up there and do that, and we are happy that you are going to be a youth delegate, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much. Mr. Smithman?
That's all, sir.
All right. We're going to move right into some public hearings, and we'll get that started.
Yes, sir. Our first item for A is a public hearing regarding proposed installment financing for Northwood Park Middle School improvements, and our interim finance director, Pam Wertham, will present this item.
Good morning. So we are going for a financing for the Northwoods Park Middle School. It is a renovation as well as a small expansion. I don't know all the details, but I know that there's a gymnasium involved in that renovation. The construction is a little less than 13 million. That includes the furniture, fixtures, and equipment that will go into that, and it also includes about $300,000 worth of special inspections that are required. We have about 1.4 million included in design fees that most of it has already been paid for by the county. We will be reimbursing ourselves out of this financing. We have the resolution is to not exceed $16 million. It probably, we probably will not borrow that much, but we wanted to have the authorization from the board to go and request as much as 16 million. The bond sale will occur on October 3rd of this year.
We're asking for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Before we, we gotta go to the public hearing.
Public hearing.
So sorry. No one has signed up for the public hearing, Mr. Chairman. We will now close the public hearing and hearing, and we need a motion regarding a resolution to enter into this installment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing, none. Motion carries. So moving to general items.
I'm going to ask Mr. Kevin Turner, our tax administrator, to come down and take care of items five through D for us. Five A through D. Sorry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. Today I have four items for your consideration. First is the annual settlement of the tax collector, which is a preliminary report and sworn statement. North Carolina General Statute 105-373 requires that the tax collector provide an annual settlement to the Board of Commissioners. The annual settlement process provides for a preliminary report containing a sworn statement affirming that diligent efforts have been made to collect the taxes due. The report also includes the following list. A list of persons owing real property with unpaid taxes for 2023 per NCGS 105-373A1 totals $1,486,37.68, and also a list of persons owing personal property with unpaid taxes for 2023 per NCGS 105-373A1 totaling $461,329.43. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the preliminary report and sworn statement included therein and the list of owners with unpaid taxes for real estate and personal property.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor or any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing, none. Motion carries.
Next is the annual settlement of the tax collector. It's the settlement for the current year taxes 2023. NCGS 105-373A3 states that as after July 1st and before he is charged with collecting for the current fiscal year, the tax collector shall make a full settlement with the governing body of the taxing unit for all taxes in his hands for collection for the preceding fiscal year. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the settlement for the current year taxes for 2023.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing, none. Motion carries.
Next is the settlement for prior year's taxes. North Carolina General Statute 105-373B provides that annually, at the time prescribed for the settlement provided in subsection A3, the tax collector shall settle with the governing body of the taxing unit for collections made on prior year's taxes. Taxes for the prior year is in the amount of $1,756,612.79 are to be charged back to the tax collector. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the settlement of taxes for prior years.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing, none. Motion carries.
And last is the order of collection for the tax collector. North Carolina General Statute 105-321 stipulates that the Board of Commissioners approve an order of collection authorizing and empowering the tax collector to utilize all available statutory remedies in collecting delinquent taxes. The order of collection has the force and effect of a judgment and execution against the taxpayer's real and personal property. The order includes 24 taxes, which become due September 1st, as well as the prior year's taxes referenced in the settlement. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the order of collection and authorize the chairman to sign the order of collection.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Before you sit down, Kevin, I just want to say, I just feel like you all do not get enough praise for the job that you do in your office. I know it is a Goliath tax, oh, tax, task, forgot the S. Goliath task to collect the monies that you do, and if you would, just for the public to understand, the percentage of uncollected taxes is really minimal comparatively speaking with throughout the state. Could you just share that with us? So?
Yeah, it is. Our percentage of collected taxes is 98.8, and we strive to get as close to 100% as we possibly can.
Well, I think you do a wonderful job, and you and your staff deserve just kudos. Thank you so much for a great job.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Mr. Chairman, item five E is going to be presented by Pam Wertham, and this is a requirement response to the audit report that you received last month. Normally, this would not be required, but as that our audit was not turned in before the deadline, there's a procedural step that we have to do, and Ms. Wertham will walk us through that.
The, we were very fortunate this year, or very skilled, something. I don't know what you call it. We did not have any audit findings other than being late, and I hate that. I'm very upset that that happened. However, we have it, a plan going forward to alleviate some of those issues this next year, and this letter outlines some of the, it's a requirement by the LGC, and it's a letter that outlines what we're doing to remedy it and the fact of how it came to be. We are asking the board to authorize a major, at least a majority of your members to sign this letter, along with the county manager, myself, and the deputy finance officer to sign the letter to send to the LGC.
To approve.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing, none. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Mr. DeSelm's?
Yes, sir. The next item before you involves the Kroger opioid settlement matter. The county has participated in litigation against opioid manufacturers, pharmaceutical distribution companies, and chain drugstores whose misconduct helped contribute to the opioid crisis. To date, the county has participated in settlements that are expected to bring in over $19 million to Onslow County. Before the board today is a resolution that will allow the county manager to execute the proposed settlement and the second supplemental agreement for additional funds pertaining to a settlement with Kroger. Onslow County stands to receive up to $560,000 of the over $40 million that is projected to North Carolina state and local governments from the Kroger settlement. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the included resolution, which will allow the county manager to execute all documents necessary to enter into the opioid settlement agreements with Kroger and to execute the second supplemental agreement for additional funds.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing, none. Motion carries. Now move on to item G. I think that's Veronica.
Yes, sir. Ms. Veronica Ortiz is going to come up and present, I believe it's an annual resolution. We have to reaffirm our program for the opioid settlement.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. I'm here to present the opioid settlement funds spending authorization for fiscal year 2425. The authorization of opioid settlement fund expenditures requires local governments to adopt the opioid settlement fund budget through a legal budget ordinance, as well as adopt a resolution that provides specific information required by Section 8.6 of the memorandum of agreement. The Onslow County Board of Commissioners approved the fiscal year 2425 budget on June 17th, 2024. The county budget contained the specific requirements for opioid fund expenditures, and this resolution is required, and it outlines the opioid fund spending plan for Onslow County in fiscal year 202425. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of this resolution, which serves as the opioid settlement funds spending authorization for fiscal year 202425, and authorizes the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing, none. Motion carries. Thank you. No consent agenda items, so we are to the managers' comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three things to brief you on today. The first is, you've probably already seen the big push we're doing in the community on the strategic plan input. We're trying to get as many people as possible to help provide their vision for where they think the county should be in the future, and we have television, radio, and other ads trying to generate more participation. Participation has been very good thus far, and we're trying to close it out over the next two weeks strong. The next thing I wanted to bring your attention is, we have begun a deliberate effort with our department directors last week in building trust and building the organization that is set on the values that you've adopted. We are using a book processed by Patrick Lencioni called The Five Dysfunctions of a Team, and Tom Sherwood began, is doing that training for us, our new HR director. So it was well-received last Thursday, and we're looking forward to several months of building our new leadership team, a broad leadership team in Onslow County government. Finally, tropical, what, tropical storm hurricane? Hurricane? Are we a hurricane yet?
I don't know.
Debbie is on the way, and we are monitoring that very closely with the help of our folks at emergency services. We will be in the, probably in the next 24, 36 hours, just doing some light convening with our municipal peers and others around storm preparations. We will continue to monitor that, and we will be prepared to seek a state of emergency and/or open up the EOC at the appropriate time. But for right now, we are monitoring this in 12 to 24-hour increments, expecting much at the end of the week. But the rain, when the rain starts today, it's going to be raining for a while, it seems. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner comments. Who'd like to go first?
No, go ahead and start. Our young lady that came up today, my hat's off to her. It's a very important topic. I'm asking the county manager to reach back out to her and maybe do a community highlight with the community spotlight with our representatives with the county. If you heard that young lady at all, she's compassionate about what she's trying to put the message out, and I applaud her efforts and the age that she is to make a stand, and please let that go forward and have more young people come up and address it. That podium there, it means a lot, but when you stand behind it, it's a different story. But God bless her, and I appreciate her stance, and please, manager, if you'd reached back out to her to get her at a spotlight, you know, the opportunity, I think it'll do a lot for our surrounding counties. The storm's coming. The manager has already talked about it briefly. Please be aware, go ahead and get prepared now because it's going to rain, and it's going to be a lot of it. So be safe, and God bless you, and we'll see you back at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Next. Commissioner Price?
Well, thank you all for being here. It is the most wonderful time of the year as football practice started July 31st, and that goes for any athletic organization, you that these young student athletes are participating in, and encourage them. There's nothing better for a kid than to be involved in a team where they learn how to overcome obstacles, they learn to develop work ethic, determination, discipline. You know, so encourage kids in your neighborhood. Go out and see their games, be it soccer, volleyball, whatever it may be, football. You know, be a part of that with the upcoming season, and we thank you for being here. Have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Commissioner.
I'm going to be real short. I just hope everyone stays dry as much as they can in the next few days, and don't cross running water on the streets. Not a good idea. Have a great day and week.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bennett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the gentleman from Sleep in Heavenly Peace. I think I heard you on the radio this morning. It sounds like a worthwhile effort. Thank you for what you're doing. I wanted to thank Mr. Smithman and for our workshop. We spent almost two hours this morning before this meeting in a workshop, and I think we accomplished a lot. Seems like our workshops are very useful these days, so we appreciate that. And several of us are planning to go to Winston-Salem for North Carolina Association of County Commissioners this weekend. I'm, I'm pretty sure that if I go to Winston-Salem, then the hurricane will follow me, so I'm planning to save Onslow County from the hurricane by going to Winston-Salem because it'll probably go right where I go. But we appreciate y'all being here. Hope you'll be safe and be careful out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. Thank everybody for being here, and Walter Scott said something very, very important is that what we see a lot of times, we get a lot of flooding in Onslow County, quite a bit of flooding, and you'll see our personnel get out there and put barricades up, and I have watched people move the barricades and try to drive through the water. And if you, if you're that stupid, you're going to wind up getting hurt. And I mean, I can imagine, and I hate to talk about one individual that did that, and he was a sheriff somehow, someplace in Onslow County, and a Jacksonville police officer had to rescue him. Got out there and the water was too deep, but that's the kind of stuff that happens in Onslow County. We have a lot of running water, we have a lot of water around us, and please, if it's flooded, leave it alone, turn around and go the other way. And I was not talking about Chris Thomas. I seen, I seen.
Let's clarify that.
I wasn't talking about you, Chris. I wasn't talking about you, Chris. You can thank Prentice Elms, he was looking back at you. No, it was not Chris Thomas. But there are people that'll move our barricades and drive through, and that's when it gets dangerous, and we don't need our people trying to rescue you because they put their lives in danger. But please, be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan, Vice Chairman.
Just a couple of things. Thank you, Dave, for the workshop this morning. It was two hours of a bunch of information. I like what Lisa did as far as the airport's concerned. That was very informative, I had no idea, so I appreciate that. And Royce, I appreciate what you put on there. I'm 100% behind our motto, "In God We Trust," that we're going to try to put up on our courthouse, because that's, that's our motto, that's our national motto, and it's on every coin and every dollar bill, $20 bill, so I appreciate that. Yeah, Chris, he wasn't talking about you, man. I looked at him when he started saying something, I saw you getting nervous back there, but definitely not you. But to go back to what Commissioner Buchanan said, look, people, if it's flooded, go around, don't drown. That's the phrase. I mean, don't try to push it, because you don't, you don't see what's underneath that water, because sometimes water, the pressure will cause sinkholes in the road or whatever, flood your engine out, just because you got a four-by-four and you got a man truck, don't be driving through it. Turn around and don't drown. So many people get hurt and get killed by fast-moving water. And if you go to my commissioner's page, I posted the update for Hurricane Debbie, so you can look at what we see, so that you can stay informed. Don't treat this storm as something small. Every storm is inevitably dangerous, and if this thing stalls out like it says, we could have massive flooding up and around North and South Carolina. So just be mindful of that. And to the gentleman this morning, I heard you on the radio this morning, I appreciate what you did. My wife's a co-host, I think she asked you some of the questions, and she was texting me saying that was a great idea, and I thought it was. I think what you guys are doing, and I know you're backlogged in Onslow County, over 200 bunk beds is what I heard you say?
Yes, sir.
For Onslow County? And I appreciate what you did, or what you guys do. I think it's just a very, very noteworthy thing that you're doing for these kids, and I agree with your sentiment and, you know, your philosophy about no kid should go to sleep without being on a bed, and that's very important. So thank you very much for coming and telling us that. And my last comment, to segue into Mark Price's comments, because you knew I would, August 24th, August 24th until January, now we're entering the religious season. It's college football, and that's when it starts. So stay tuned and watch Georgia Tech play Florida State in Dublin, Ireland, August 24th, Friday. And I want you to root for Florida State if you can, but just know that the season starts, and I'm excited about it, and it's going to get back to the UNC-North Carolina State rivalry, and who has bragging rights, because there's three of us up here that really pull for our team, so go Knolls. Thank you, guys, and we'll see you next time around.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Gentlemen, thanks for coming today and sharing about the Sleep and Heavenly Peace. I feel sure we can get some information to you on how to work with the nonprofit stuff we have here, one kid at a time. Thanks for everybody coming out today, we appreciate it. Stay safe and stay dry, and follow the rules and the regulations, and don't look at them as suggestions. Follow them, it'll keep everybody safe. Thank you very much. And then we need a motion to adjourn.
Sumo. Second.
We are adjourned.